Alrighty, guys, we're going to come back to order. We're going to move on to what was the first item on our agenda. It's now the second item on our agenda. That is the State Road 434 corridor planning study. I'm going to briefly turn it over to Mr. Cobb for an introduction. Then, Mr. Cobb, we have Commissioner Bob Delary here with us this evening. Bob, we appreciate you coming down.
My pleasure, Mayor.
And explaining this all to us. We have representatives from Kittleson who will also help us out and work through this. So, I'm going to assume at some point we'll just turn it over to them.
Actually, Mayor, you just, you basically said everything that I was going to say, that the county has engaged Kittleson and Associates to conduct this planning study. And tonight, we're here for council to review their findings and their recommended short-term improvements. And I would like to turn it over to them and let them make their presentation.
Gentlemen, Floridians-
Thank you, Mayors. First of all, I want to say thank you for allowing us to present here today. For the record, my name is Bob Delary. I'm one of your county commissioners here in Seminole County. And I also want to thank you for allowing us to present here today. Last week, we did present to the City of Winter Springs. And at the other presentation, it was at their formal meeting, they did vote in favor of the resolution of passing in support of what we're presenting here today. We do understand that this is a work session for you. You can't take official action, but we've been informed that this is on your next scheduled meeting, which is next Monday. Both Ryan and I will be back, just in case there's any questions from the public. And hopefully, that it will be favorably supported by the city council. Commissioner Zimbow would normally be here tonight, but due to a scheduling conflict, he's not been able to. But with us tonight is his assistant, Deborah Schaefer. She's in the audience. And I want to thank Commissioner Zimbow for allowing Deborah to be here today. And I also want to thank her for his hard work. Commissioner Zimbow and I both serve on Metro Plano-lando. And there's quite a bit of funding from Metro Land- Metro Land- O'lando coming here tonight to not only do some of this presentation, do some of the engineering in the future if we do move forward, as well as construction. There's many elected officials that have been working on this 434 project. Mayor, you've been involved with it for a number of years through Metro Plano-lando. I want to thank you for your hard work. There's been many staff members, your staff. Bobby's been working with it as well, as well as the District 5 Secretary from DOT, Secretary Mike Shannon, has been very involved. Tonight, we're going to talk about State Road 434. It's the section of 434 if you're traveling from Winter Springs to Oviedo. Once you pass the 417, it's going to, you're going to see that Kittleson's going to be speaking about that. There's been many years of hard work on this. We all know that something needs to be done. All you have to do is listen to the residents, and hopefully, something will be done soon. This is truly, I believe, the right thing at the right time. I'm going to be very brief. History, we did have a kickoff meeting several months ago, last year, I believe it was, over by the church in Winter Springs. It was the beginning of the first phase of what we call the PDNE, the Plan and Development Engineering. In order to spend federal money, we have to go through a very strict process. And I believe that process was warranted. With that, we did look at what would it take to four-lane 434 in this section. You're going to hear the consultants talk about what it would take and right away. The engineers, as they got deeper into this project, determined that the criteria from the federal government actually changed over the past couple of years, and causing this project to get pushed out even more. We don't want to wait the amount of time that it would take, so we believe this is really the first phase. The engineers are able to address, I think, the concerns of the community. I would like to ask everyone to keep their comments or their questions to the end of the presentation, because you'll see here tonight that as you go through this deck of presentations, a lot of your questions would potentially be addressed. Because of the project and the changing of the state, we had to reclassify this project. And this project is now reclassified as a complete street project. It is not a road widening project. And with complete streets, we're looking at cross-access, we're looking at community interconnectivity, we're looking at trails, we're looking at how people access the road as well as move on a longitudinal type of approach. The Board of County Commissioners did have a work session regarding this, and we agree that this is the right approach. We wanted to reach out to the two cities that are involved, Oviedo and Winter Springs, get their input before we take official action. It is your city. We would not want to tell you what to do with your city roads and how your city needs to grow. And that's why we want to make sure that the two cities understand what the issues are, and that if any questions they have will be addressed, not just tonight, but in the future. And after the questions are addressed, we hope to move forward. Tonight, we have Kittleson and Associates with us, Ryan Cunningham. Kittleson and Associates is one of the national leading experts of roundabouts. When it comes to roundabouts, the Department of Transportation of the State of Florida goes to this firm. This is the firm that reviews most of the roundabouts in the State of Florida. And they actually hold presentations nationally on how to do it right. We also have John Dredge with us in the audience. He is the county engineer, also the Public Works Director. Before I turn it over to Kittleson, I just want to make sure that everyone realizes that all questions be addressed at the end. So if you could hold your questions to the end, I greatly appreciate it. At this time, Ryan, take it away.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me tonight, and I look forward to presenting the project to you. Could you move to the next slide? So, what I'd like to do is start with the corridor planning study. We started, as Commissioner mentioned, just with the big, long-term projects in mind. And then, I'd like to move into what's going to happen in the short term in each of those sections. Good. So, the, where we are in the process with the planning study, we've highlighted here, and as Commissioner Delary mentioned, kind of right before the PDNE would occur, some of the things that we've accomplished in the corridor planning study was that we've separated and defined what we call Section 1 and Section 2 separately and independently from each other. So, if we could look at the next slide. The overall corridor limits go from 417, you kind of have to orient yourself, north is to the right, 417, all the way down to Mitchell Hammock Road. We define these separately as Section 1, which kind of stops at Franklin Street, and then picks back up at Smith Street with Section 2. The reason that we skipped this section between is that section, when we started the project, was under construction. It's now completed with an intersection improvement that basically widens 434 out to two lanes in each direction on approach to the 426 intersection. And we know that's part of preparing for the 426 widening that's coming in. So, as part of the planning study, one of the things we wanted to do was to be able to differentiate and separate those two sections, because in the federal process, it's currently all one project. And so, if you were going to move forward with the PDNE, you'd have to do the entire roadway section. And there's some, there's different needs, and there's different things in each of those sections that might hold up the other. So, we wanted to be able to separate those and move independently. In the existing conditions analysis, and we went through in great detail on this in our public meeting that we held last October, we looked at the existing AAT, average annual daily traffic out there. The section with the greatest traffic volume is 24,000 between 417 and the curve at Hammock Lane. You can see that that kind of drops down to 19,600 south of Hammock Lane, down to Franklin Street. And then, down on Section 2, it drops even further, down to 16,200. So, in the existing condition, all of Section 1 is basically operating at level Service F, so it's failing in terms of just how much traffic is served there versus what the capacity of the roadway is. And then, down in Section 2, 16,200 equates to level Service C. So, even just based on how those two sections are operating quite a bit differently, we can see that Section 1 is really a priority for what needs to happen. So, beyond roadway capacity, we did look at, you know, what are the needs kind of holistically or comprehensively of the corridor? So, again, looking at just Section 1, we looked at, we tried to look at these from what, who are the roadway users and what are their needs? So, the motorists who are out there, obviously, they need more roadway capacity. We also heard from residents who live in the area, safe access to and from their residential driveways or the unsignaled intersections in the area was a really big need. If you've tried to come out of any of those residences in the morning particularly, it's very hard to come out and turn left out of the Oviedo neighborhoods. And then, safe school bus loading and unloading is something that we heard a lot about as well. So, there's school buses that go in both directions on that section. They stop in four different areas, and because it's an undivided road, they stop traffic on both sides of the road. And so, that just takes what's already kind of a congested scenario and really blows it up and makes it much worse. And then, we also looked at bicyclists and pedestrians. So, in terms of, you know, bicyclists, there's a pretty narrow bike lane out there, not very comfortable for riding on. Most people, kind of the typical bicyclist would not want to do that, especially the family bicyclist. So, we want to provide a safe and continuous bicycle facility, and also be able to access between the uses along the section. So, there's not a lot of places to cross 434 between 417 and Hammock Lane. So, we wanted to just create more permeability on the corridor. In terms of pedestrians, there's a lot of sidewalk gaps out there. So, a lot of the developments that have been built have sidewalks right in front of them, but there's gaps, you know, all in between. And so, that's one of the reasons that school buses stop at multiple places, but we wanted to make sure we are creating a safe and continuous pedestrian facility there. Short-term, we looked at some potential for network connections that could just reduce some of the demand on 434. So, part of the reason that 434 is so congested is because all these green roadways represent neighborhoods or developments where people have to load directly onto 434. They have no other choice. If they're going to leave their home or their business, they have to go to 434. So, these red lines, one that connects Palm Drive and Pine Avenue, one at Newcastle Street connecting to Artesia, and then, one Division Street up to Florida Avenue. These are three potential connections that could basically quadruple the amount of access north and south along this area that doesn't have to rely on 434. This is not part of our project, but it's something that we identified as part of our study, because we saw it as kind of some low-hanging fruit in some, in some conditions. The long-term solution that we identified as part of the corridor planning study was a four-lane divided roadway. So, we looked at four different alternatives, but two of them really rose to the top in terms of just meeting all of the needs that I, that I mentioned earlier of the corridor users. So, Alternative 1, on the left here, is a four-lane divided road. It includes buffered bicycle lanes, which is a seven-foot bicycle lane with a buffer in between the travelway and the bicyclist lane. And then, also a sidewalk on one side and a shared-use path on the other side. So, that combination of bicycle lane and shared-use path kind of covers the whole gamut of, you know, the bicycle rider and, you know, where they're more comfortable riding. This obviously has a pretty substantial right-of-way impact. So, Alternative 3 is a lower-impact alternative, so it's a four-lane divided roadway with a sidewalk on one side and a shared-use path on the other. So, we basically trade out the bicycle lane, so we save about 14 feet of right-of-way doing that. And we are actually looking to reduce the posted speed here from what's currently 45 to 40 miles per hour, and try and get something that's a little more appropriate for that residential context, and make it more comfortable for people who are walking and biking along the roadway, but still getting you through the corridor at a reasonable rate. So, I mentioned the impacts of the four-lane widening. Those were coming out to between 110 to 120 feet of right-of-way that would be needed for those two alternatives. As you can see, we only have 50 feet of right-of-way in this aqua section around McTavendash and down here to Artesia Street. So, you know, one of the messages from the corridor planning study is if we're going to go forward with this long-term project, there's going to be substantial right-of-way impacts. There were a few homes and a few businesses that we'd identified that would be impacted by a widening project in the long term. In Section 2, again, being able to separate these and look at them separately, we identified the needs in Section 2 separately. So, while roadway capacity wasn't a problem today, we did see it kind of hitting that capacity in the future. We looked at a 20-year horizon. We saw the intersection operations at Mitchell Hammock Road, that traffic signal to be extremely important to what happens on the corridor north of it. And then, road safety was, was something that stood out here. We had a lot of rear-end accidents in this, in this segment. As you may recall, if you know the roadway, there's no left-turn lanes on this segment, and so, you have all these, you know, driveways or minor intersections, and anytime somebody wants to stop to turn left, there's potential they could get rear-ended. We also wanted to improve our facilities for bicyclists. There's not a very good bicycle facility out there today, but there is a trail crossing right there at Smith Street, and we want to make sure that people who live in this area have access to that trail crossing, and also to be able to cross the street. So, if people wanted to get over to Oviedo on the park from the west side of 434, you know, to have a couple of good options for them to cross 434 in that area. And the same thing for pedestrians. We do have sidewalk on both sides of the street throughout Section 2, but in a lot of cases, it's right up on the curb. If you do have a lot of traffic on the roadway, it's not as comfortable as a walk for those people. And then, crossing the street becomes an issue in the area of boardwalk and the fire Again, we had identified some potential network connections down there that would just take some of the demand off of 434. The red line and the two dark-green lines are existing gaps that we'd identified. The two dark-green lines are actually improvements that City of Oviedo is already working on making happen. So, those are the Oak Street and Wood Street extensions. So, that's really great to see those things, those two projects moving forward and making that connectivity not just between that neighborhood, but also connecting it to the network to the east that's Oviedo on the park. So, the long-term solution for this one, we looked at a set of three-lane scenarios and two four-lane scenarios as well. So, the track, the projected traffic in the future is kind of at that threshold, where if you do things properly, a three-lane section would actually serve the traffic, as long as you can take care of the traffic signals on the north and south side of the corridor. So, we were able to identify improvements to those traffic signals to, to make those work in the future, to keep those working in the future. And so, we, we have these two three-lane scenarios. Alternative 1 is, you know, one lane in each direction divided by a two-way left-turn lane or, or a set of turn lanes. And then, you would have a buffered bike lane and six-foot sidewalks on either side. Alternative 2, trying to just really skinny down that impact a little bit, is removing that buffered bike lane and building a shared-use path on one side. And you can see the proposed right-of-way for Alternative 2 is 66 feet, and Alternative 1 is 73 feet. If you're, if you recall, this area has much more, a tighter envelope in terms of where the buildings are, whether the homes or the businesses, right kind of up on the edge of this corridor. So, as I mentioned, Alternative 3 had a 66-foot right-of-way envelope, and you can see we have somewhere between 60 and 66 feet typical right-of-way availability in Section 2. So, that, that alternative would really help kind of minimize the impacts as opposed to Alternative 1 or to a four-lane widening project. So, we had reached kind of the end of our corridor planning study. We had come up with these set of alternatives. We were anticipating pushing those into a PD, a formal PDNE study, or a set of PDNE studies. And at that time, we were discussing our approach to the public meeting. We found that Metro Plan's priority list had changed about a month before, a couple months before. Commissioner Delary mentioned the federal mandated performance planning measurement, performance-based planning. Performance measures had been applied to our list and taken our project from somewhere around number 20 down to like number 50. And so, the anticipated construction funding was not going to be available when we needed it to be available at the end of that PDNE study and design. So, the county kind of picked up and immediately just said, "We need to focus on a short-term, high-impact project. If, if we can't deliver this project when we thought we would, we need to come up with a different project that we can deliver in the short term that's going to really have an impact." And so, that's what we started to do in Section 1. I want to do, I want to go ahead and mention, in Section 2, there were a few short-term projects, go ahead to the next one. Yeah. Few short-term projects that are kind of already in the, in the works in Section 2 regarding the safety needs on the corridor. There's a pedestrian crosswalk being considered by FDOT near Boardwalk Avenue. So, if you know, there's a fire station down there, there's an emergency signal, and so, FDOT's looking at an opportunity to create a pedestrian crosswalk there, which would be protected, and would allow people to get, you know, a little more access between Boston Hill Park on the west side of the road and Oviedo on the park on the east side. FDOT's reducing the posted speed out there. They may have already done that. I know it was in the works from 45 down to 35 miles per hour. So, we think that should help with that permeability that I mentioned, but also with some of the rear-end crashes that we're seeing. Intersection operations, a second westbound left-turn lane is already being added to Mitchell Hammock Road. So, I think you all, that's a City of Oviedo project, you all know about that. So, that should add-
County, I think.
Quite a bit of capacity.
It's actually a county project. We funded it, we gave it to the city. We're not looking for money.
Excellent.
We're not even looking for membership. Sorry, Drew.
My mistake. And then, I mentioned the network connections at Wood Street and Oak Street.
Wait, if Drew signed yet for a membership, he might save some money on it, so I wouldn't be so quick to just turn him down.
You go to the next one. Sorry. No, no problem. So, when we were tasked with developing a short-term project for Section 1, knowing that that longer-term project is more long-term than we really wanted it to be, we went back to the drawing table, but we started with the needs that we had identified as part of the corridor planning study. Just because the funding changed doesn't mean that the needs of the corridor changed. So, we started with the motorist needs listed here, the bicyclist needs, the pedestrian needs. We wanted to identify some short-term project that could address all these needs in the short term, something that could be funded with available funding, which is, there's a complete streets set of funding at Metro Plano-lando, and then also something that we could build in the next four to five years. So, the project elements that we went to that would, that would kind of fit the bill and are constructable are a set of roundabouts, access management on the roadway between McTavendash and Hammock Lane, speed management, so I had mentioned before that we wanted to bring that speed from 45 down to 40. We still intend to do that, providing sidewalk connections and a shared-use path to improve that pedestrian bicycle connection. So, this shows on the map where that project is really focused. So, the, the green lines here represent the shared-use path. We're proposing a shared-use path from McTavendash down to Artesia on the south side, but as part of our development, we decided, let's go ahead and push this all the way out west to the trailhead on the west side of 417. So, now, we have a shared-use path connection that would allow anybody who lives in Oviedo on this corridor, a direct connection to that trailhead via a shared-use path. And then, on the north side, we're also incorporating that shared-use path between McTavendash and Hammock Lane. So, people who live on the Winter Springs side, they'll have a, a shared-use path in front of their development. They can cross the street at one of the roundabouts and get all the way down to the trailhead. So, the roundabout locations I mentioned earlier, McTavendash, Hammock Lane, and Artesia Street. So, these are three intersections on this corridor that are currently failing. The McTavendash approach, the Artesia Street approach, in the AM and PM peak hours are having substantial issues, you know, with that stock control. Hammock Lane was converted to a traffic signal a couple of years ago, and in the morning, that northbound backs all the way up and past Artesia Street. So, it's, it's, with that single lane in each direction, it just does not have enough capacity to serve the traffic that's there, much less projected growth.
Lighting, talking about the light.
Oh, yeah. So, there-
Can you go back one?
Yeah, back, sorry. The typical section for this is shown in the bottom left, and you can see along the shared-use path sections, we'll have roadway lighting, LED lighting. We'll also have, all the roundabouts themselves will be lit. And so, the, it'll have intersection lighting, which will also focus on the crosswalks as well. So, you have a lot of just safe-traveling for pedestrians and bicyclists as they're going through here. So, I wanted to give you just a quick look at the concepts for the roundabouts. So, at McTavendash, if you recall, the, the traffic volumes were a lot higher on that section between 417 and Hammock Lane. And so, what we had to do to serve existing traffic, but also future traffic, is to actually do a partial two-lane roundabout. So, as you're approaching the roundabout on 434, it, it breaks out into a two-lane approach. You can see how that happens. Then, it allows you to go through the roundabout in two lanes, side by side, and then that does like a zipper merge back in as you leave the roundabout. So, this happens in both directions, and that actually greatly increases the capacity of the roundabout. It'll actually allow this roundabout to work, not just when we open it in a few years, but also in 2045, which was our design year volume.
So, these are not throwaway projects.
Right. And if the widening, funding for the widening does come through, they can, you don't have to rebuild the roundabout. It can fit into the, the roundabout that we're, that we're proposing here. So, the next one would be to replace the signal at Hammock Lane with a, a partial two-lane roundabout. So, you can see, again, we're taking that approach where 434 gets dual-lane approaches as it comes up to, to the roundabout. And then, we've also included a separate left and right turn lane at Hammock Lane. If you're familiar with that intersection, in the morning particularly, there's a really high number of southbound right turns coming out of that area and going west on 434. So, this would allow that to operate really smoothly, not just today, but in the future. So, even 2045 operations at this roundabout would work better than the signal does today.
Right. Stay right there. One thing they're not doing presently, because we're not there yet, we're not addressing the storm work, we're not actually seeing the trail actually approaching the storm work. That's going to be addressed during the actual engine. Next one.
Yeah. We've identified two pond locations that we think are needed for this, for this project. And then, Artesia Street, the traffic volumes do drop as you go past Hammock Lane and south on, on the north-south section of 434. What that did was allow us to, to design and model Artesia Street as a single-lane roundabout. So, you don't have that dual-lane approach coming and going on 434, and that allowed us to actually put this roundabout in the existing space without having substantial impacts to right-of-way. So, we were concerned, because you have built properties on three corners there, we just wanted to make sure that we, we didn't significantly impact those properties or those structures. And so, this fits in really nicely with a single-lane approach, and it also serves the traffic through 2045. So, when we got through kind of our analysis on this, and we were really reassessing the needs versus what we were proposing, we saw that the short-term project really checks all the boxes in terms of the needs that we had identified earlier in the corridor planning study. And in some way, I think we're getting a project that meets all of our needs a lot sooner for a lot less money and a lot less property impacts than we otherwise would have had with that long-term project. So, the short-term project schedule, we're looking to, we're really just wrapping up our project development right now. We had a meeting with FDOT management earlier today. Commissioner Delary mentioned that Winter Springs expressed their support for the project last week. FDOT is, has been a partner this entire time and expressed their support again today at the management level. We're looking to begin design next year, so it could, design funds would basically be available next summer, and the county's working on putting together an RFP to line up a consultant to do that. And then, right-of-way and construction funds would then follow, you know, two years to four years after that. So, come five years from now, we could begin, we anticipate beginning construction on the short-term project.
The good news, Mayor, is we're not looking for funds from the City of Oviedo or from the City of Winter Springs. Metro Plano-lando is actually funding, I believe, $1.5 million for design.
1.6.
1.6, I'm sorry, rounding numbers. They're also allocated $5 million for construction and $3 to $4 million for right-of-way. And that's what's been, Commissioner Zimbow and I have been working on. And that's all set up. After we get the, the two cities on board, your city on board, as well as the Board of County Commissioners, we will be meeting with the school board to talk about school bus locations, but there's, as well as our state reps, we don't want to meet with them until we have everyone on board.
And so, in terms of next, next steps for this project, we are, you know, looking for the support of the local governments. FDOT has made that very clear, that it's important to them. Before they move into design, that they know that both cities and the county support the project. So, we presented this to Seminole County on the 27th of August, Winter Springs, last week, and then, as I mentioned, FDOT management meeting and to you all today. So, we're currently setting the date for the public meeting as well, where we would send out flyers and notifications and have just the general public come see a presentation like this and be able to ask questions. And we're looking to do that probably the last week of October, if we can get that done. The project application process is currently being reviewed. It's called a 4P application by FDOT. And so, that's in process, and we're just really gearing up, preparing for the design phase.
Just, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to you to ask questions. Thank you, Commissioner. I'll start with council members, who would like to go first. Start with you, Keith, and I'll work my way back.
Well, it's a little disappointing. We've been waiting 20 years for the floor lining to go on, but I'm not going to dwell on that. I think we've got to do something. I think we've got to do something. We've got to support this. First question is, is the roundabouts are actually going to increase the capacity of the road just by putting the roundabouts in?
Because, because we can do the partial two-lane roundabouts, they increase the capacity of the roadway. So, with the traffic signal, we wouldn't be able to just widen out to two lanes, put them through a signal, and then take them back down. We would have some issues with that, but the roundabouts are really designed to do that well.
Okay, and I'll tell you, I just got back from California, they use two-lane roundabouts all over the place up there. I've been through it, and they work well. I'd be a little concerned about pedestrians walking across one of those things. Are there going to be any plans for crossovers?
Can we go back to the roundabout slide, one of them?
Maybe McTavendash.
Keep going. Just Tavendash, either this one or McTavendash.
Yeah, this is a good one. Yeah, so, each, each crossing would be two lanes, where you're just looking in a single direction. And, really, what's, the way that it's set up is, you know, that kind of, I think you used the word exaggerated last week, exaggerated curve that happens on entering the roundabout forces the vehicle to slow down and yield at that point. So, the crosswalks are placed, one vehicle behind that yield point, so that a vehicle can come, and then a gap can be left for pedestrians to cross. Now, when you have a two-lane crossing like this, you'll also support that with a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. So, it would be one of those, you know, flashers that the pedestrian will go up, push the button, it'll start, it'll kind of grab the attention of the vehicle that's coming up.
Ryan, that's actually located in the old downtown of Oviedo where the trail crossing is?
Yes, the one they have at the trail crossing would be on each of these approaches. And, as I mentioned, they'd all be lit as well, so.
So would there be a plan, I'm thinking more along the lines of the Section 2, to get across 434 into Oviedo and Park, an overhead crossover, any plans for that?
Not that I've heard of. I know FDOT is looking at a, using the emergency signal to implement a pedestrian crossing with, you know, signalized protection. But yeah, I've not heard of any bridges being.
Ryan, would you meet with our staff, I know you're a consultant to us, but actually work with our staff and DOT to figure out what they're doing and report back to this council, so they know ahead of time of what exactly is happening?
So I have a vision in my head what's out there now, both at McTavendash and down closer to Mitchell Hammock, and it's, it would be a nightmare crossing that. I think this would be better, but there's a lot of cars going down that, that road, and pedestrian, I think, would still have a hard time. I understand this. I can just see 500 cars coming through there and trying to get through that safely, without, without the cars getting rear-ended too, like you mentioned.
Right, well, and, so we'd be introducing curb and gutter on this roadway as well, and with the access management in this piece, you'd have curb and gutter on both sides. It's really going to help control that speed. So, right now, it kind of feels wide open, and if there's not congestion, you can fly. It's not going to, it's going to feel more enclosed in a way that makes you just want to drive a little bit more carefully.
Okay. Commissioner, you said that the Metro Plan has money for the right-of-way, to start right-of-way purchase?
We have $1.6 million allocated for design. We have $5 million allocated for construction, and I believe it's $3 to $4 million allocated for right-of-way, once the design is done. It's not allocated today.
Okay, so there's no, no way to fast-track this?
We are fast-tracking.
That is fast-tracked.
This is fast-tracked?
Yeah. Metro Plan's speak, this is, this is like lighting speed.
Yeah, I was going to say, this is.
This is warp speed.
Okay, I was just hoping maybe we could do some things in parallel.
We're going to try to do that. I had the commitment from our county staff, John Dredge, they're trying to do the best they can.
There is a requirement for right-of-way, it has to, you have to reach 60% design plans before you can start that process, so you know you're buying the right property.
I can't buy, we cannot buy someone's property unless they, as Ryan said, you're 60% into the designs, and I know that it's, you're, you're asking for the right amount of property in the right location. That's the issue with taking right-of-way, or buying right-of-way.
Okay, and did I hear you correctly, that improving the connectivity with Pine Palm Newcastle and Division is quadruples?
So, what I, what I meant by quadrupling is that there's currently one lane in each direction, north and south, to get between, say, downtown of Oviedo and 417 interchange. If you allow that connection between Palm and Pine, and the one in McKinley's Mill and the other one, you've gone from one lane in each direction to four opportunities to do that, four lanes.
I'm not going to open that can of worms, because those battles have been fought, and we've all got scars from them, but that's, that's an interesting observation.
And, we did a modeling exercise a few years ago on that, and just that connection alone that you mentioned would, could reduce the demand on 434 by 10%, so.
I believe you also have other issues of accessing on the 434, that is not a requirement of this project.
Correct.
Okay, and I just, you know, going back to the, the single, single lane, you know, that's what we're working here. I lived in Boston for a while when they were putting the big dig in, and a lot of those access roads up there are single lane, and they work, they work pretty well.
There's a engineering philosophy that has been told us at Metro Plan, to go fast, slow. And, it's a theory that the engineers actually look at. As long as you keep the speed constant, at a lowest speed, you can go faster.
Get that springboard effect, yeah.
Correct.
That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you. Chief?
Again, you know, I would like to see the four lanes all the way. However, you did answer in your presentation a couple of my questions dealing with, are the, these are going to stay, if and when it gets four-lane, these roundabouts are staying? It's not a spend money now to rip it out later?
They're not throwaway projects.
Okay, I heard you say that, and I'm glad to hear that. Secondly, my, my concern with the, with the two-lane right-aways and like, a custom bridge, they work great in California, but I know some of the issues we have at the other roundabout in the city. This is a new concept?
I always have to call you Chief, I know you're a city council member, I'm sorry.
Bob, I've been doing it for a year and a half, it just, it doesn't work.
And, Ryan, you can explain it, right, and I can. The difference of these traffic services is actually a force term there.
Right.
And that's what's going to, that makes all the difference on the roundabouts, is that force term. Correct, Ryan?
Correct, yeah, there's, there's several design elements that we incorporate in what we distinguish as modern roundabouts, as opposed to rotaries and things like that that you might see like in New Jersey. I think the one, the other one that you have in the city is, it's a little bit tight and it has five legs, and so that's, that's one of the things that gets confusing about it. But these are, these are designed in accordance with all those design principles, and Commissioner Delary is mentioning that we have a national expertise in it. Our company actually wrote the design manual for roundabouts that Federal Highway uses. So we had, one of, one of the co-authors of that is in my office, and I had him look at these and make sure this is, you know, what we want to propose. We're seeing a lot more come into, FDOT has, has put roundabouts kind of on their list of, we want to build more of these, not just because of their operational enhancements, but because of their safety enhancements. So they significantly reduce injury and fatal crashes, and I think that's going to help with, what we hear is that, you know, people in Florida don't, aren't used to roundabouts, so they have a hard time, you know, they need education, they're having a hard time driving them. But they will see many more of them all over state roads in Florida.
And I don't disagree with you at all, because when you start putting stoplights there, people will speed up to hit the lights, and that's when you have the, the red light crashes, and that's where you have the rear-end crashes, and someone comes to halt and stop when the light turns yellow. So the roundabouts, and I agree that lowering the speed and flowing the traffic makes for faster traffic. So, I like the designs, I wish the timetable was a little quicker, but I do understand how that works.
And Chief, keep in mind that the end of 2020, there's going to be major construction here of 426 and 419 through Oviedo High School all the way to Jackson Heights.
And I just can't wait for that to start.
Neither can we.
Is, and I know we're a ways off from the implementation, because we've got design, but I can foresee issues during construction with traffic.
Yep.
So, is there, is there, hopefully there's ways to mitigate some of that during the construction time?
Yeah, in the design phase, they'll put together MOT, maintenance of traffic plans, to figure out how to make all this work while keeping those lanes open.
Yeah, just to defend Ryan on this, he has not had the contract yet to do the actual engineering. That is going to go out to bid.
Right.
And that engineering firm will be involved in that.
Well, it's always a concern when you have major, major construction, that you get that disruption before it gets better. And if there's, if there's some ways to mitigate that, like I said, it's down the road, but if there's some ways to mitigate that during that time, it just makes everybody's life easier.
Great, thank you Chief. Deputy Mayor?
Couple of things. The, so these are the only three roundabouts, right, on the, on that?
Correct.
Whole leg, okay. On the, on the, I think it's the next slide, the 434 Hammock Lane one, you're showing four lanes going in and four lanes coming out, how far is that four lane's going to stretch?
So, on the south side, there's a left turn lane at Laurel Oaks. It'll actually, we've discussed with FDOT whether we want to bring that into a single lane prior to the development of that left turn lane, or just allow that second lane to drop into the left turn lane. So, but it'll, it'll end by or before the Ellington Laurel Oaks intersection. And then west of here, basically just off the map, is where that taper starts to begin back down.
So you're going to taper it off and then open it back up when you get to McKinley's Mill?
Correct.
And then close it back after that?
Yeah, and what I didn't, what I don't have on here, but is providing the concept plans, is there's going to be a set of directional median openings at Calypso and Cranston. So, you would be able to turn left into either of those streets, or if you lived just upstream of those, you'd be able to make your U-turn at that location, you wouldn't have to go all the way to the roundabout.
And Deputy Mayor? I'm sorry, can you repeat that one, one time? Cranston is Barrington, Calypso is the Town Homes.
Can we go to the overall map, maybe that one?
Yeah. There you go, yeah. Those are the Winter Springs neighborhood? One's on Oviedo side, one's on Winter Springs side.
Oh, Calypso is Heather, the other one, right, that's right, that's the, yeah, yeah. Now, what are you doing, well, I guess the Town Homes are going to be left-in, and then they'll just be right-out around the rotary, because they're right next to it, or.
Correct, yeah, so if you, if you're forced to make a right-out, then you can use the U-turn, you can use the roundabout to U-turn.
Roundabout, excuse me, I'm sorry.
And Deputy Mayor, because of the requirements from the feds, we cannot do a road widening project. We have to do a complete street project. We're just trying to do as much as we can.
All right, so, because I can understand the flow of traffic increasing with the Hammock Lane roundabout. I know that there's issues at Artesia, we had a pretty bad accident there a few years back, and we have been there a lot, actually. And then McKinley's Mill as well. But, I just want to make sure that those two roundabouts aren't going to impede the, the flow of traffic that we're currently, because we're trying to get as much traffic.
Right.
Up and, and out to the 417, basically, and Hammock Lane will do that, because you won't have that stop, stoplight there anymore. But the other two, I mean, do you have the flow on those to make sure they're not going to actually cause upstream congestion?
Yeah, so we've looked at, we looked at the queuing as well as the delay. So just in terms of delay, I think, you know, when you go through McTavendash today, because there's no, there's no stop control or anything like that, you have, you have no delay.
Right.
But, in the future with the roundabout, you're talking about like less than 10 seconds of delay, on average. And so, some people will have, you know, they'll come up and they won't have to stop at all. They'll just be slowing down a little bit and passing through. Some people might, you know, there might be a three-car queue, and it'll take you 15 seconds to get through. But, and that'll, that's in the peak hour, right? So, when it's not busy out there, you're not going to see any delay there. You're going to see the roundabouts serve that function of slowing traffic down when it's not busy, and they'll increase that capacity when it is busy.
Ryan, I think one thing that the roundabouts will do that you don't have now is that it's going to make it better for those that are entering from Artesia, entering from McTavendash.
Yes, absolutely.
It'll make, it'll make 434 much easier for them to access, because they're not turning left anymore. Now they're making a right turn, and they're going around the roundabout, they want to head west, or they're flowing into traffic heading east. And so, that's probably going to be the biggest benefit at those intersections, is that it's going to make it better for the side streets to actually access the 434 facility.
And you're only looking at traffic from one direction.
True.
You're not looking at traffic from two directions.
And the, the Artesia circle, is that going to be as tight as the Franklin Street circle that we, that we currently have?
I haven't put them up against each other, but I don't, I think it's going to be a little bit smoother to go through, I'd say it that way.
All right. Now, I'm, I think that this project, I mean, is much needed, like everybody else said, the four-lining would be ideal, but we understand where that's at. Now, I, I think that this will hopefully, you know, at least allow access from Artesia and McKinley's Mill and speed up traffic at Hammock Lane.
Deputy Mayor, there's also a comparison that I'm going to ask staff to send to the city that shows you how the intersection works today, how the intersection will work with a traffic light, as well as a roundabout today, as well as in the future. And you'll see a significant improvement in both situations with the traffic circle. So I'll make sure that you get that.
All right, perfect.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Well, Commissioner, as you said, this has been a long struggle. Many years ago, actually, when you sat with us, we had to make a decision, was it east-west or north-south? And obviously, east-west was our most pressing need at the time, and now we have to tackle north and south. Unfortunately, with the changes at Metro Plan, I watched that project go from, like you said, it was in the middle there, 20, it was towards the top, and then all of a sudden, I show up Metro Plan one day, and it's all the way at the bottom, off the list, it's gone. And I think I made a call to Commissioner Delary, and I said, what the heck happened to our project? C'est la vie, that's, there's nothing we can do about that. That funding's not going to be available for many, many years. Something interesting, I mean, there's so much history behind all of this, and why the city has all the traffic coming down its main rotaries rather than bypasses, which were part of the plan back in the 70s. Mr. Cobb has the planning book upstairs, that, who did that one, Porter?
Cobbson.
Right.
No, I'm wrong, Post Buckley.
Post Buckley did a report that was presented to city councils back in the late 70s, early 80s, before, you know, when this was all just still farm country, of these very scenarios happening. And, and how bypasses needed to be built around the city. They were basically planned, ready to be funded, and different decisions were made by different councils for different reasons. I mean, we, we can't fault them for the decisions they made at the time. We wish they would have been different. We would have had bypasses, we would have had constraints placed on our roadways, which is why the widening stop at our borders and don't come through. If the constraints weren't there, they probably would have been through already. Because when they were widening up to 434 and coming up from UCF, they would have just kept going. But, that's water under the bridge. A very interesting statistic I saw, though, and I don't know if anybody else noticed it, you have 24,000 cars coming down 417 to the curve, 5,000 of them disappear. Yeah, that's way back at the beginning. No, that's the right-of-way one, but we're going to get to that one in a second. There it is. We have 24,000 cars coming off of the 417. We lose nearly 5,000 of them at the curve. Now that's the folks who are taking Florida half, I'm going to guess. That's where they're going, because they're heading out east, they're heading someplace else, they're cutting through. Then you've got your 19,000 heading down to Franklin, well, that's the rest of them going across Franklin through the smaller rotary traffic circle, and either heading out 426 or heading out 419 to their eastern destination beyond our city. And then you have your 16,200 heading south, going to UCF, Research Park. That's where all those folks are going. So, you know, it, it, it's a cut-through issue in the whole city, with limited availability of roadways for added capacity at this time. When I was in Carmel, Indiana, I don't know if you guys have anything to do with that, but they have 125 rotaries. but they have 125 rotaries, traffic circles. They took out every stoplight. It was amazing to drive around the city, and they designed and built them exactly as what you showed us. When you come up to it, it splits into two lanes, you go through the circle, if you're going to go around the circle, you go to the inside, and everybody knew how to drive on them, except for us. But everybody there knew how to use it.
And Mayor, before we actually get into the actual opening up the road, there's going to be a large education element to this.
And we're going to show people how to do it.
I don't know how we're going to do it yet, but we are committed to do an education program of educating the general public about traffic circles.
FDOT has a lot of resources that we can use on that.
That'll be, that'll probably be a wise decision.
And you won't need a membership.
Don't worry about it, if Drew's around, he will. The project is getting something done, it's not a throwaway on the north end, it's needed, it's needed sooner than later, but as you've heard us all say, I mean, in Metro Plan, five years is warp speed. I mean, you're not going to get anything done faster.
And Mayor, if we can do it faster, we will.
Of course. But here's the question I have, and if we can go, Barbara, if you can pull up Section 2, the right-of-way slide that I saw, that's going to be a few slides over. It's towards, there you go, right there. Nope, go back, perfect, thank you. All right, here's my question. How do we get Section 2 included in this? Because you've got your right-of-way. It was 66 feet that you needed for right-of-way, for what you showed us. We have 60 feet on that little tiny section, I'm sure we can find three feet on each side through there, because as a matter of fact, most of it on the, that would be the east side, there isn't anything. How do we get that done? With the turn lane?
Mayor, here's what I would tell you, we would like to keep these two projects separated, that way we're not tying down one...
I'm not trying to tie it into one, I'm asking, how do we get Section 2 started?
I think if the city felt that Section 2 was very much needed, and did a different request, not just to the district commissioners, as well as the two members of Metro Plan, as well as the Board of County Commissioners, we would start that, but this project, Phase 1 has...
We've got to keep them Section 1, Section 2, I get it.
I always have to talk about, two different projects are totally separate, but we would have no problem looking at it, we just got to figure out where there's available money.
Right, because as you mentioned, that section flows well until somebody tries to make a turn.
Yeah.
Then, you know, once somebody tries to make a turn without turning lanes down the center, that's where you see the accidents occur. To make that Section 4 lanes in the future is going to be, unless we take out a lot of houses, it's going to be very difficult, but to make it three lanes, as you showed us, in a complete street format, that could work.
Make a request.
Well, I think Mr. Cobb just wrote it down, that might be coming to you sooner than you think.
Make a request.
And we want to be a member, damn it.
One thing that Ryan and I talked about, even in the future, the three-lane cross-section actually takes us deep into the future, because of the lesser traffic demand on Section 2. So, there isn't...
And that your signals have two, your signals are getting them out in two lanes in each direction.
That was the thing that we, because I questioned him when he first brought it up, so we don't need four lanes on the south end, that makes no sense. But when you look at how, the number, the level of traffic, when you look at the types of turn movements, and then like he said, with the operational improvements at Mitchell Hammock Road and 426, 419, the three-lane improvement, if we can get the turners out of the through lane, out of the through traffic, where we can get the turners off on their own, then we, yes, we can enhance the traffic operations, and then buy a lot of time into the future without the need of the four-lane on Section 2. Right?
Yes, absolutely.
So, Mayor, you're not suggesting we ask to replace Section 1 with Section 2?
Oh, God, no. Oh, no, 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 too much work has gone into this.
Okay.
No, that train's, that train's heading down the tracks. What I'm saying is we'll make a request for the next section, since the right-of-way is there, and then the, we'll make it to, as the commissioner said, not only the county commissioners, district office, Metro Plan, for them to look at that as a part of complete streets, because that's, that's where this funding's coming from.
That's correct.
And there's different parameters for this funding than there would be for widening money. So, if that can get included, excuse me, if that can get added as a different project at a different date
That's the key.
as a complete street project in Section 2, there could be the possibility for a five- or six-year horizon for funding. To do something like we're doing on 419, 426 today is next to impossible with the way everything is lined up. You've got to be essentially ready to go, in order to even have a chance to get on the list. There were a lot of projects, there were a lot of mayors wondering what happened to a lot of their projects, and then they, they all just disappeared one day, so. But, you know, and the MAC Committee has a, the committee that I sit on, has a seat on the Metro Plan Board. So, I think it's Mayor McDonald now, right, from Maitland, who has the seat? So, it's not as if the cities don't have a representative on the board, it's just that you have 20 representatives on this board, all trying to work together
For the same dollar.
For the same dollar, for their communities, and it just becomes unbelievable, the battles that go on, you know, and a lot of money gets spent down in Orange County and other communities. Seminole County gets a great share, those who are from Seminole County who sit on the big board, Commissioner Delary, Mayor Pat Bates, Mayor Triplet, we have the
Commissioner Zimbauer.
Airport Authority.
Commissioner Zimbauer.
Commissioner Zimbauer. Going to do a great job trying to get the money back up here into Seminole County, but, you know, a lot of the funding goes to Orange County, and a lot of the funding's going to I-4.
Mayor, just so everyone's aware of, when you talk about a lot of money going to Orange County, on an annual basis, we do look at a fair share of money being appropriated in different counties.
By population, and, yeah, I've seen the numbers. You know, Osceola County is finally catching up a little bit, because, I mean, for many years, nothing was being done down there. I used to sit on Metro Plan, and they'd show us all these great things, and it'd be like, "Oh, yeah, that's Osceola County," but, you know, finally, some of the things are being done down there.
That's how the bridge happened at Red Buck Lake Road by Home Depot, was because we were able to move it up through Metro Plan and D5. That's how that bridge happened.
But I think this is, this is great. Brian, if you could work on letter resolution or something to ask that Section 2 be a separate project, let's not commingle these things.
And Mayor, I'll take away, tonight is going to be that the consultant for Seminole County is going to be looking at what that cross-section is at the fire station?
Yes.
Get that back to you and your staff.
We'd like that.
As well as, he's already done this, and it's not in the presentation, but the intersection comparisons of short-term and long-term, Ryan?
Yep.
Of traffic light versus roundabout, and it'd be an eye-opener. And if you, when you look at that, it looks at the letters of classification A through F. You can actually see that by putting these roundabouts in, you actually went from a failing intersection with a traffic light to an excellent passing grade of an A or a B with the roundabout.
Well, sounds good to me.
We'll make sure you get that.
I'm assuming, from what I heard this evening, we have consensus for the resolution to be passed on, or presented on Monday, hopefully for being met with approval? We can leave the commissioner with that going forward?
If you don't mind, I would like to be back Monday?
Of course.
In case there's any questions. I believe Ryan, we'll both be here.
More than welcome, of course, anytime. Are there any other questions on what we were presenting this evening? Mr. Cobb?
On the seventh, with the, with the resolution expressing support, is it something that I can put on consent, or would you prefer that we put it on the resolution section?
Is the agenda large? And then just throw it under resolutions and... And then maybe at the following meeting in October, so we don't inundate them with letters and resolutions, bring the second section back, so that way it's not confused. And make sure, however that reads, that it is a separate project.
I think we would just address that, and we'd set our parameter as 434 to Mitchell Hammock.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioner, thank you. Ryan, always nice to see you, thank you for your time, we do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members.
And at this time, hearing no other business, we're going to be adjourned.